Good evening. Welcome to the November 9th meeting of the Dover Sherburne Regional School Committee. My name is Kate Potter and I call this meeting to order at 6:34. We'd like to begin the meeting with our community comments. And I do have something to read if we have anyone here for community comments. Okay, very good. Then moving on, I would like to turn it over to Superintendent Smith.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and good evening, everyone. I always like to start out, and I've got Beth doing double duty, so let me talk about a couple of pictures you're going to see before I start the PowerPoint. So I was very pleased this past week to be invited by Ms. Janice Barry to come to the middle school. And when you talk about academic excellence, which you'll be hearing quite a bit this evening, walking into a class with over 50 students practicing in the band for a performance that was upcoming, I wasn't able to make it to the performance, so I scooted over during the regular class time. It was clear in looking at your educator how well-prepared, how individualized the attention was and the direction to every one of the students. Every student was important in that band with the part they had. It was uplifting. It made me want to go back and take up an instrument. There was no fear. It was forward-thinking and progressive and exciting and welcoming. And there is much research done on students that play an instrument and what it does, again, for their academic prowess. So again, when we're talking about academic excellence, you know, we're not just going to hear about the math and the sciences, but we're going to really hear about, as we say, challenge success, looking at the whole child and what makes a productive student in your schools. I also, when you see, I purposely put a picture in of all your middle school students. They were excited about something that was happening during passing. And although we're still in a time of COVID, and I see Assistant Principal Hurley kind of smiling through her mask, this was really very organized. I want to say it was right around the Halloween time, and they were excited about something that was out in the lobby. But to see kids acting like kids and be, it just feels good. Having taught in middle school for many years, you know, very welcoming, and I really enjoyed that age. And our teachers that teach our middle school students all deserve certainly awards, you know, for dealing with so many things happening at that age. And the last picture here, I did have the opportunity, and I really missed each of you. So I have always attended the MAS, Mass Association for Superintendents and Mass Association for School Committee conferences that they have once a year where they bring both groups together with dynamic speakers. Obviously, they did not have the format that they usually have, which is standing room only, an opportunity, and I say this going forward, you know, for your superintendent and members that can attend, and I understand that people work, but it is worthwhile when I look at the efforts put into the speakers that are there, you know, the opportunities for professional development, and I hope it's something, this year, by the time I actually got the brochure, I ended up getting put on a waiting list. So I was able to go in person on Thursday and had the opportunity, as you see here, for the Commissioner to speak. And it's been a difficult year for everybody, and I want to tell you something that really resonated with me, and looking at people that are willing to serve on boards and looking at your community, we're all watching what's happening. And to me, it feels important to be in a place like Dover and Sherburne where there is civility. It doesn't mean we agree on everything, but it means that we can have honest and open dialogue. And that's what the Commissioner was calling for. They actually made a statement by the end of the conference talking about what is acceptable behavior as we try to do what we can for our young people in the Dover and Sherburne communities, and you're doing an excellent job. And interesting also, the Commissioner talked about in making his decisions, and they're not easy, but he felt so supported coming from the Boston community with the doctors that are working with him. And I want to tell you, in having sat through, and I'll talk a little bit about it tonight, you know, whether it's your Boards of Health meetings when they come together for their joint meetings, whether it's a health advisory that we are able to be a part of and ask questions, ask questions about something as simple as if a band is performing. We understand what Desi is saying, but we're talking about, you know, making some of these decisions within guidelines. And to hear the Commissioner talk about that, I felt so proud to be from these two communities right now as your interim superintendent and having those valuable members that are helping to lead the way. So I want the community to understand that. Many, many speakers, I'm not going to go into it this evening, but it was worthwhile, and I hope you plan for that in the coming years. Next slide, please. I didn't have an opportunity to go to this. I know Assistant Superintendent McCoy and probably many of you were able to attend this. I do want to say, and I want you to look, as we talk about trying to make decisions, so this was, and please correct me if I'm wrong, but there were three vignettes. It was...
Four.
Four.
Four and four, eight total.
Eight. And they were specifically designed so that you would not have more than a few students on the stage. They were able to be, you know, socially distanced as much as possible. And I want you to know, as soon as they went backstage, they were masked. You know, the crew was masked, the audience was masked. So again, this is something where we're right now talking about our musical that is being planned for our middle school, which is a little bit different as far as how many players go. But these are decisions every single day. We're looking at ways to see if we can move our students so they have some sense of pre-COVID, but you know, safety is always at the forefront of what we're doing. And again, I'm sure you'll hear from Principal Smith about, you know, what a great event it was. So let me get to the vaccination. I just want to quickly update you. I'd like to, you know, kind of move us forward, but I want to say to everybody that as of October 15th, this is the 80% vaccination threshold, and I am getting some messages from members of your community, you know, trying to understand this. So let me explain this, that the Commissioner has come forward, and if I take you back, I believe he came out on August 20th, the day after we made a decision to go with our face-covering policy to start schools. The Commissioner made a decision on August 20th through October 1st. You then saw him come and say on October 1st, "I'm extending it to," I believe it was November 1st. Before that time was up, the Commissioner came forward again and ended up saying that he was extending it again based on the knowledge that he received from his medical experts to extend it again to January 15th. A lot of that was based on, and it's exciting to talk to you today about this, our five-to-11 year olds did not have the opportunity to vaccinate, and we can talk a little bit about that tonight. But since I have seen you last, if you look at one of the neighboring communities in Arlington, I believe this weekend they held a clinic for their five-to-11-year-olds in one of their schools. I can't remember if it was 1,500 or 1,800 slots they had, but they were gone almost immediately. And we clearly, so this is starting to move us, and when the Commissioner is making these decisions, just like our decisions here are to try to keep our kids in school, our staff teaching, and deal with those things that are happening. So here's a little bit of the confusion. The Commissioner also said, although that date is there for January 15th, if you have a school in your community, and that's that October 15th date, that reaches a threshold of 80% vaccinated of staff and students, and I'll go over those numbers tonight, you do have that at your high school. You're just about at 90%. 100% of your staff at the high school are vaccinated, and many of your students. So let me, let me go through just, but I want to explain that part first to everybody. So although you see that January 15th date, if in fact you have that 80% threshold met at any of your schools, we have it at our high school, you could fill out an attestation form, and it's the superintendent saying to the Commissioner, "I attest to the fact that we have met these terms." That was sent in the day after our meeting on October 19th. It was October 20th. I heard back from the Commissioner's office, and there were some questions to me. There were questions about linguist comments shared with your middle school, which has not reached that 80% mark yet. There was some shared space in here in a science wing. I felt we have answered those questions. I am now playing phone tag and trying to follow up, you know, with the Commissioner's office. I believe they will approve our waiver going forward, so I'm waiting for that to happen. Parents have reached out to me, and I have to be very fair, I have not had a lot, but I've had a couple of parents saying to me, "When are we going to unmask? You know, we've reached that threshold, you know, I heard you at a meeting." And then I have a parent very skillfully said, "My children at the high school are vaccinated. They are masked. You know, I work in a hospital setting, and I understand the variant and the concerns, and I would like to remain masked." So, you know, wanting to keep the kids in school. So again, I hear the discussions, and I know what's happening in your families. And again, I thank you for being patient and for partnering with us as we go through this process. I will say that if in fact, and I have here, the Board of Health is meeting in a joint meeting tomorrow evening, I believe it's at 7:00 PM. I'm not sure if I have the time correct.
I think that's right.
Okay. But please check that. I'm not sure if it's 6:30 or 7:00 PM. So your boards from Dover and Sherburne are meeting to talk about the unmasking of our students. So when you talk about the goalposts, you're going to, it's not moving them. They are looking at data that is going in the right direction right now. So they're looking, and they will discuss tomorrow evening, both Boards of Health, what the data is that they're looking at. One is a transmission range. We were in substantial transmission. I think we have dropped dramatically, going in the right direction, and they want to continue to work with us to be able to make some of these decisions. And really what happens is it's handed back to you as the regional school committee. So if you have your Boards of Health talking to us about what we have to look at for those factors, they're ready to move very quickly. We're waiting for the Commissioner to give us the final okay on our waiver. I was actually at a meeting today with superintendents all around Metro West. Hopkinton has unmasked their high school. I was told that about 60% have reached the threshold and approved by Desi. But about 60% have unmasked at this point, and they said it was pretty much the same for teachers and students. So there are some, even though the school is allowed to unmask, there are many that are choosing not, they're choosing not to.
Wait. Did you say that 60% of high schools in Massachusetts?
No, no.
Okay, I don't understand.
I was with superintendents today, and the one school that I am aware of that has dropped its mask mandate because they reached that 80% threshold is Hopkinton. And what I was told was that they have about 60% of their students at Hopkinton High that have chosen, and staff have chosen, to unmask at this point. They felt it was at this point without any issues. You know, students were respectful and teachers of the decisions that were being made. They're obviously watching their information. It's very new. I believe it started, here we are, just, you know, November 9th. I think they started it on November 1st. Their plan was to collect data during the month of November to see where they're at after the Thanksgiving holidays and decide if they're going to continue. But that is a school. I also will let you know that in this meeting today, there are a number of other schools in your Metro West area that are also doing exactly what we're doing, waiting for the okay from the Commissioner, working with their Boards of Health, but are very ready to unmask their students at their high school levels. I did not hear of any middle schools that have reached that. So unvaccinated students would have to continue wearing their masks even if in fact that mandate for the masking was dropped. So you have 100% of your staff at the high school, so all of your staff will be allowed to unmask, but your students, if they're unvaccinated.
How exactly would that be enforced?
Well, that's, I'm probably jumping ahead here, but can I, can I get to it?
Yeah, get to it. If you're going to get to it, that's great.
Yeah.
I have another question.
Sorry, I do have...
I have a question. How does, how does the exemption, this 80% exemption opportunity work with the town's mandate for businesses? Is, do you know what I mean? They, last week or God knows when, they had a deliriously long meeting that where they...
In Dover.
Yeah. Where they implemented a mask mandate. How does, so is this essentially an exemption to that, or...
Yeah, that's a good question, Len. I was somewhat aware of that. I know tomorrow evening they're specifically talking about us, about the schools individually, and the opportunity we have for the unmasking in reaching that 80%. So I can, I can...
I was under the impression from, I attended a meeting on Thursday and another day last week, the Board of Health meeting, so maybe Wednesday morning and then also Thursday, that right now they had one week of really positive data, and if they had two weeks in a row of positive data, they were going to go back to the drawing board on whether or not they kept the town's mandate.
Okay, all right. So maybe an issue.
Yeah.
I have heard too, I think Millis has gone unmasked, but I do not know anybody who works there, but I had heard that too.
You know what? I'm not sure, Tracy, if the Millis superintendent was there, they very well, I'm still getting used to, there were probably about 20 superintendents today.
Yes.
I'm sorry, I wish I could tell you, but the one that spoke up today was Hopkinton, and like I said, there were others that were very soon to, to do exactly what we're doing. I was just told by my assistant superintendent that as a region, you know, we are our own municipality, so when you talk about the decisions of Dover, I know they are going to talk about us individually tomorrow evening.
Yeah. That would make sense. That makes a lot of sense, that we're not subject to, right?
Right. And then the question will be, you have the mask mandate policy, which remains in effect until you rescind it. So you would have to rescind it for the high school.
Well, that's a good point. So Judy, I found my notepaper. So I talked about tomorrow the Boards of Health are going to meet. This would be the process. We're awaiting final approval from the Desi Commissioner on our waiver. We have to also meet with the DSEA, that is part of our MOA on our health and safety protocols and our face-covering policy, EBCFA. In the MOA, we agreed to reconvene on an as-meded basis to discuss any changes to the agreement, and the face-covering policy was in that agreement. So if in fact that changes, I have alerted the co-presidents. I met with them yesterday, and they are prepared to meet with us. So we would bring our negotiations team back to have that discussion. As we said, it is handed back to the Dover Sherburne Regional School Committee to then make a decision about the face-covering policy. Fortunately, we can either call a meeting, we have a meeting scheduled for the 7th, which is a joint meeting and a regional school meeting, because the face-covering policy affects all of our districts. So we'd have to carefully look at the wording in that if we're unmasking our high school at this point. And I just want to remind everybody, we also need to work with Principal John Smith. So he and I have had numerous conversations. You had brought up at one point the idea that our high school students, and we have every faith that they can do this, but we're talking to them individually during their flex blocks, other opportunities where teachers are having conversations about respect, respect for other people's decisions as to if somebody's masking, it doesn't mean that they're not vaccinated. It doesn't mean that we have conversations about people's individual choices. That kind of behavior allows us to move forward as a caring school community. So I know that that is something that we're, we're dealing with. I also have to communicate this, you know, how quickly we could do this. You know, we need to communicate with the families. We need to communicate to our community and make sure our high school has everything set to go. And also, riding on the buses, I still want to say there is, that is a federal mandate, so our students from high school would still have to, like all other students on the buses, you know, the driver, any adults on the buses, would still have to wear the masks during that time. So it's not rescinding that policy. And so that, I don't know if that answers your question, Judy, did that answer your question?
No, my question was, how are you going to enforce unvaccinated students being required to continue to wear masks? Can you even ask? I assume that you know who's vaccinated and who's not at the high school.
From a faculty standpoint, I do, but for a student, as of now, I do not. But prior to that change, if in fact that change is made, then I will have access for that, and we're going to ask it be on the honor system for, you know, at least initially. But then if we have situations, we will contact families and have conversations about, here's where we are moving towards, and we, you know, the key component is to keep our kids in school.
So it's going to be on the honor system, except I assume that you and Ann will probably take a look around and see if people are honoring their obligations.
That's correct.
I get it. That makes sense.
And clearly, we were talking back and forth on Desi. You know, we don't want to get into such a situation, so I have every, so in other words, we don't want students continually reprimanded. I know you've done an excellent job, and you and I have talked about very few incidences. I'm having trouble with my mask this evening. I think I need to tighten it up. But you know, I think John and Ann and the staff, you know, have a little saying up and over.
Up and over, yeah.
You know, get it up and over, you know, your nose. So you know, none of this has been easy, but I think when we are in the schools, we come back and say, "It is amazing to watch your children who are learning, who are socializing, who are doing what they need to do." And if in fact, and let me go over your vaccination rates to show you, you know, where we're at. We've done a good job, and I think they deserve the opportunity. And all I can tell you is please be flexible if we have an outbreak. And today I was looking at a school in Boston. I think there was something in Andover. I think, so again, somebody said, "Well, this was the result of trick-or-treat and people getting together." And I'm not sure what it's a result of, but we have to be very flexible and be able to mask up if in fact we have a cluster or something that we, we need to address. So when you look at your sixth grade, and we're actually excited, sixth grade we were watching, and your sixth graders, if you look at your September 1st date, are just turning 12. So here we are, November 9th. So every day, more kids are turning 12, and that was slowly happening. It's kind of like pulling off the Band-Aid now when you talk about five-to-11-year-olds. I'm sure there were some parents who have spoken to their pediatricians or have made the decision to vaccinate, and I very much understand, we're told it's looking something like a third, a third, and a third. A third of parents that can't wait to get their children vaccinated, a third that are going to stay behind a little and, and watch what's happening, and there might be a third that at this point, that's not something that they're choosing to do. So we are looking at, when you look at your sixth grade, so we had 17 fully vaccinated, four partially, out of 161, that was 10%. And when you look at that total, when you're talking about a middle school, I didn't have hope we'd see this until probably, you know, the end of, you know, May or June. I feel differently now, because when you look at the seventh grade, 134 fully vaccinated out of 159, 84%. And when you look at your eighth graders, 167 fully vaccinated, two partially, and this changes every day, by the way, the numbers, out of 185, that's 90% fully vaccinated in your eighth grade. It's one of your larger percentages. As far as your staff at the middle school, you have 99%, which brings your total right now combined to 68. So obviously, we're away from the 80%, but I'm feeling very differently than we would possibly get there sooner than later. Our next slide is your high school. So this is what was put in. Again, this has changed since the last time. In your, I'm just going to read, in your ninth grade, you have 87% fully vaccinated, 10th, 88%, 11th, 86%, and in your 12th grade, 89%. You have 100% of your staff for a total of the 89%. So we're quickly approaching. And when you hear your Boards of Health talking, I don't think they were satisfied with the 80%. I think they were looking for a higher vaccination rate in feeling that we were safe going forward. So let me, let me stop there before I go on to the next, which is kind of changing gears here. Any, any questions on how that is working? So another update has been the field trip in grade eight. And again, I, I have heard from parents who have expressed this is a rite of passage. I clearly understand that. I want you to know with, the question that was left when we left the school committee meeting of the region last month in October was, what would happen to the students? We needed more information if somebody was to have symptoms, test positive. We have four students sharing a hotel room during, I believe, the three days that they're away. So you have a dynamic group of doctors associated with this tour group? I have no doubt being in Washington DC, they talk about George Washington University, but the question remained with our leadership team, if somebody were to have symptoms, test positive, who's quarantining with them? Where are they going? You know, parents would have to get there, staff would have to stay behind. And in talking again to area superintendents, and I've never done this as much as I'm doing this this year, you know, talking to other communities, and there were many of your surrounding communities had eighth-grade field trips, some to Washington DC, some to other out-of-states, and they are not having them this spring. So they are doing other things. So tonight, I'm going to recommend to you, after reviewing this decision with Metro South School Districts on middle school field trips, and knowing that you have 185 grade eight students that are eligible for this field trip participation, I had concern with your four students per hotel room during the trip in close contact and unmasked, concern with participants in crowded venues in Washington DC. I have concerns about, again, COVID-type symptoms. We'd need to plan for how do we follow the testing and quarantine protocols, and how do we transport the student or students home. I do believe you have an opportunity, if we do this now, to work with our middle school teams, staff and administration, to plan a local menu of options, field trip opportunities for grade eight in the spring of 2022. And that is what I'm recommending at this time.
Do you want us to ask questions now, or...
Yeah, sure.
Okay. You, you mentioned that other school districts have scrapped the grade eight out-of-state field trip.
Yes.
Do you know of anybody who's doing it?
You know, Judy, I don't. Honestly, I sent out, I have a chain, sent it out to superintendents and asked, and many said, I think somebody said they were doing, I could actually read my text message, but it was Nature's Classroom. Somebody was doing Nature's Classroom, but it was no, no, canceled the trip to Washington DC. I did not have anyone say, yes, we are taking our middle schoolers out of state at this time. A lot of it, I'm sure, has to do with vaccination rates and the very things that we're doing if you're staying overnight in close contact.
Kathy, any feedback from your parents at all on this specific trip?
I had feedback from a parent, you know, disappointed, as I said, it was a rite of passage, and they wanted to know if we could have everybody vaccinated. You know, I just, even in looking at those numbers, you know, 185 students can take part in it. You actually almost have 185 students. If you look at your numbers in, in grade eight, there was a large vaccination rate, but there's probably about 10% that, you know, would not be able to go. And I had parents concerned if I go to the high school. So we approved, or you approved, two field trips going back, you know, almost two years ago for one of them. You had one site, I believe it was called the Island School in the Bahamas, and they mandated whoever, and I think you have about 12 students going on that trip for vaccination. You also have a trip southwest, and I had parents concerned that their students were not vaccinated, nor did they intend for them to be vaccinated. And they wanted us to try to configure everything we could to allow them to go, and the decision was made that, I think that number's about 22 students on the southwest trip. Principal Smith worked, so not, there was not a family that lost any money from this, and our hopes are going forward that we're able to, again, you know, be back to being inclusive of all students in the future. But at this point, those are your two field trips. I think we feel confident with what is in place there. We still have to work with the parents, because even with vaccinations, we do not know, obviously, what will happen. So we are going to be having a meeting with parents and making it very clear that, you know, if in fact something happens, we have to have a plan to obviously, you know, unite, reunite the parent with the student, you know, depending on this. I'm sure we're going to assess the situation for what it is. So we, I did not feel comfortable recommending that with our eighth grade.
So you mentioned, I mean, we, there was information from the last meeting that we were, that we were looking for, and were you unhappy with the response? Is that, is that what triggered it? Because I feel like a lot of our decisions throughout this, this pandemic have been based on, you know, if, if we have implemented the protective measures that have been recommended by the professionals, we're not good to go, but you know, we've maximized the protections and can proceed with, you know, opening the schools and doing things like that. And so is, is it the case that in, that here, we're unable or we're not comfortable with the protective measures that are, that would be in place for this?
I have right here, I mean, the group talked about, again, doctors, you know, being able to come in, assess the situation. I think the part that I had the most difficulty with was you have some students not vaccinated, some students... some students vaccinated and sharing four in a hotel room. And if you're a parent that has a student vaccinated and you have other students unvaccinated, I didn't feel at this time that I would recommend to you that even with safeguards in place, that I thought that that was acceptable to do. There was talk about, again, mandating that students going be vaccinated. And this is your decision. I'm making a recommendation to you tonight, you know, based on the information that I have. I, again, World Strides, which is the company I believe that you work with, gave a very detailed account of the doctors they work with. They would get an additional hotel room. I just was uncomfortable recommending that to you, especially with the age of the students and knowing that there, you know, could be unvaccinated students sharing rooms together with hotel rooms.
And we're not comfortable mandating requiring students be vaccinated to participate in this field trip?
You very well could. I just, you know, we're sharing with you with eighth graders, they'd be about, and you actually have a percentage that don't go each year. You do plan, just to remind everybody, you do plan other events for those students that for whatever reason choose not to go to Washington DC. So that's not unheard of. And that was one of the recommendations, to have the students, you know, be vaccinated, that there was a plan in place. And in Washington DC isn't so far away. Again, I'm making a recommendation based on what I have in front of me at this time.
So, yeah, I'm just, I'm kind of holding back because I don't know how much we want to discuss now. We can do that, but we're, we have to vote on this later on the agenda. So I'm not sure what the recommendation, what, how you'd like to perceive. Maybe ask our questions and then save the discussion?
Can have a discussion when you vote.
Should we do that?
Yeah.
How about Tracy then, Judy?
I have heard, there is a local school, I can get more information for you if you need it, Kathy, that has approved a trip, I believe it's a high school, that has approved a trip. The unvaccinated must stay together in the rooms and the vaccinated stay together in their own rooms. So you can actually separate the children and that's how that school got through it. They just said, if you're unvaccinated, you must be in a room with unvaccinated. And if you're vaccinated, you're in a room with vaccinated. And that's how they saw it. And now kids on both sides get to go and it actually made all the parents happy. So that's another option. Because, I mean, on planes and stuff, they have to be masked anyway, so it doesn't matter, you know?
Judy, what, what was your rationale for, and I'm not suggesting we do this, this is a point of information. What was your rationale for not requiring everyone who goes on the trip to be vaccinated?
I just thought the Sheen numbers, when we heard about the high school students where there were only 12 students that were going on the trip to the Bahamas, and I believe you had 22 with the Southwest trip. I felt that was not ostracizing any group. You had, and as I said to you, when I look at the numbers, don't think I don't have pause. Because your numbers are high.
Yeah.
Out of 185, you have.
167.
You know, I mean, you know, we said 10%, but that's 90%. It's actually the highest of any of your grade levels, you know, with their vaccination rate. You know, as I said, I, I just felt if something happened to, I felt these were young students away from their families. If something happened, I just didn't feel comfortable with what I saw in place. You know, maybe we have.
But why not, I want to just play the game of that one.
Yep, go.
Because I know there's a rationale for it. And I want to hear, hear what the rationale is for not just saying, you know, 167 kids who are vaccinated can go on the trip. And if you want to go on the trip, then get vaccinated. And I'm not suggesting we do that. What I want to understand is, why did you not want that option? Why, and, you know, maybe Anna can weigh in if she, I don't know.
I wouldn't have Anna weigh in on this. She can share with you anything about the trip. She's worked really hard.
But whatever, I just want to know your rationale.
Yeah, I think my rationale was, again, with such a young age, I did not want to not include all students. And I felt this year that based on the circumstances I had in front of me, that we could put together a wonderful opportunity for every one of them back here and make this a memorable event for them. But I say this to you for the reasons I shared, that is my recommendation.
Sure.
And I know the school committee has to make a decision. And obviously, we'll stand by that and make it successful for students, work with the parents, just as we're going to have to do with the high school. But that was my reasoning.
Okay, that's all I wanted to know.
And if I may just add in, and, you know, we can deliberate more later, but the high school trips are during a vacation and they're extracurricular as opposed to this eighth grade trip is viewed as kind of a rite of passage, is the entire grade. I know not everybody always goes, but a majority do. The entire grade, it's built into the curriculum and it's a special year end thing. So that gave me pause. We can talk later on the vaccination mandate. Okay, any more questions on that part?
And I'd like to hand this over to my assistant superintendent.
Thank you. Thank you. So wearing my teaching and learning hat, I wanted to take an opportunity to revisit academic excellence in the district. So Dover-Sherburn is, has a tradition, a legacy of academic excellence. If you rewind pre-pandemic, challenge success has been part of the district for years, starting to think about the whole child and how can we define success broader than standardized test scores, broader than a certain track to college. You have the portrait of a graduate, causing us to think about the skills that students are learning and how can we measure and really ensure that students are learning collaboration, communication, creativity skills, having these conversations about how do we define success in addition to standardized test scores. Then the pandemic happened, so those conversations were put on hold. Now, coming out of the pandemic, we certainly have prioritized during and now student social, emotional health and wellbeing, rightfully so. And making sure that all students have what they need to access the next level of curriculum and that all students, regardless of race, gender, sexual identity, do have access to all of the programming and academics here. And yeah, that said, there is so much for us still to be proud of before, during, and even now as we approach typical school again. So I just wanted to share with you some of that data. So tip of the season for MCAS review. And so we do have our English MCAS data from the spring. You can see our numbers relative to our neighboring districts. And over time, as has been the trend for many years, our students continue to grow and expand to the point where in 10th grade, our students do very well on the test and in fact stand out as performing and exceeding or meeting expectations at that 10th grade level, thanks to all of the work that happened K through 10 up to that point. Math is the same story. We continue to challenge and inspire kids to grow, support them to the point where in 10th grade, again, our scores are very impressive. So what's interesting about science is the 10th grade, ninth and 10th grade did not take the science MCAS in the spring. So this is the eighth grade who did take it, whereas I was referring to the 10th grade in the last slide. So here we have 73% of our students in exceeding expectations or meeting expectations. However, knowing that they continue to grow towards 10th grade, if you look back before the pandemic, again, we see that trend to the point where 96% and 98% of our 10th graders are meeting or exceeding the expectations of science. Over time, this is an interesting graph because you have the different buckets. You have exceeding expectations, meeting expectations, partially meeting expectations, not meeting expectations. Of course, we want all of our students to be meeting or exceeding, but one of our goals is also to help students leap from one bucket to the next. So how do we get students from partially meeting to meeting and meeting to exceeding? And you can see the trend in English and math that we are jumping those buckets. Science continues to kind of stay the same. Now, I stuck this slide in here only to show that in terms of SAT scores, we continue to stay steady in math even during a pandemic in 2020. And in English, we continue to grow in our achievement on the SAT scores even during a pandemic. My partner, Mr. Smith, is going to pick up from here.
Okay, I would ask Ms. Potter if it's possible to have the high school rep, Caroline Harvey, present just so that she can attend to other things as a student. And we greatly appreciate it. So I introduce to you Caroline Harvey, who is a member of our student council and is also this year been appointed as the liaison to the regional school committee who will give you an update on life at the high school from the student perspective. So Caroline.
Hi, welcome. I'm Caroline. I feel like school spirit's been super high since we've gotten back to school. I mean, all of our sports teams made it to playoffs, so that was super exciting. I'm on field hockey, so we're playing tomorrow, which is exciting. The fall play just happens. That was fun to see, like, people back in the theater and like watching a show again. Also, the jazz brunch happened, so the band and chorus kept together again and worked together. It was great. The student council last year was still able to hold fundraisers, which was good. We raised $3,000 for family promise at the high school, even due to the pandemic. We're having our spirit week November 15th through November 19th, which I believe is next week. And our charity is JV's Keys to DMD, which is, was founded by and affects a member of our community. It's a nonprofit that helps students, helps kids with Duchenne muscular dystrophy. And it helps improve the quality of life for children living with this disease and funds adaptive sports, provides greater medical care access, and helps expand research for Duchenne muscular dystrophy. All in all, it's great seeing everybody back in school. And we're so thankful to the school committee for helping us get here. And even due to this crazy year, it was great seeing everybody still like stay together and have everything happen. It's fun, what's going on in school.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Anybody have questions?
What's the best part of being back in school with your family?
Seeing people again and not being bored on Zoom anymore.
I think that was very important. Thank you so much.
Good luck in your game tomorrow.
Yeah, good luck.
Thank you, Caroline.
So that's the news, high achievement and we have spirits.
That's right, that's right.
Lots of good things.
Try to keep it balanced. So what I gave you was kind of the two sides of the coin. So on the one hand, we certainly have several public type of data that is easily accessible by all to see, you know, after certain tests take place, standardized testing, as Ms. McCoy had said. And, you know, I think that, I just wanted to point out a couple of different factors here. If you look at, first of all, the number of students have increased. The number of exams, you know, for 2018, we had a higher number. But this past year during the pandemic, we actually had the largest number of exams taken in the last, I went back even further, the last 10 years, which was great. And then if you also look at the number of awards, now awards are based on student performance. So it could be AP Scholar, AP with Distinction, so it's different categories. We had 120 of our students were awarded a category. It would be similar to summa cum laude, like the cum laude. And that was during really a very challenging time. During Zoom, during students trying to figure things out, teachers trying to combine lessons. So I think that, to me, this is sort of a public side of academic excellence. But this just is one side of the coin. You know, that's, that's great for those students who do that. And you can see, you know, I put some of the scores in that you certainly can read on your own. And, you know, we have been outperforming the state in the global average. But I also look at the percentage of students who scored a five. And even in areas where our percentages may have been lower, if you look at AP Language, 83. And AP US History, 88. That means in the junior class, 83 out of 160 kids are taking AP Language. Half the class. AP US History, 88. So more than half the class is enrolled in an AP US History class. So I think that that talks about access and I think it also talks about performance, which I think are two fantastic things. And, you know, it was interesting, I had a conversation with Mr. Kaplan, who teaches the AP US History. And he said it was one of the toughest tests that the college board has put together in years because they really truly wanted to show that they were all about rigor. And they actually received some backlash among some of their AP teachers because they put out so many different types of formats in trying to continue to show their relevancy in the world without really taking into consideration the kids. But that being said, you know, we continue to push forward. We have similar numbers this year in AP US. Mr. Kaplan has four sections. The AP literature, I mentioned 36. And I had some conversations early on with Gretchen Donahue, our department chair, and a couple of the teachers. Some of that has to do with how not only intelligent our kids are, but they also know that college board plays a bit of a game. And with the AP literature as a senior, very few students can actually receive credit for that anymore. The college board has really pushed this forward. And then colleges and universities are slowing down to say, wait a minute, we can't give you credit for everything because that's less money in our pockets, okay? I see some parents nodding who know because their kids are in those situations. So junior year, we definitely have a spike because obviously, our kids are looking to try to show that they are in the most rigorous types of courses. And it's not that it's not important senior year, it's just our kids are savvy and know, okay, what do I do and what can I do? Is this pie of my life, what is reasonable for me to do and to handle? So that's kind of the story behind the story with some of this. So then there's the other side, which, you know, to me, is the work that happens each and every day. In some cases, it's a culmination. You know, academic excellence is displayed in our junior book awards and our senior awards. Those are cumulative. The junior book awards, there's a committee of about 20 people, they get together, they talk about different book awards and how it links to kids and their performance and characteristics. So it's a really intense look at our students. National Honor Society, we had one of the largest induction classes that we've had in the last five years. Our tech internships for student careers, we are fortunate to coordinate with tech so that our kids can go into areas that they may want to focus in for a career opportunity. Some cases automotive, some cases culinary arts, some cases veterinary medicine. That, to me, is providing those kids with opportunities that can then showcase itself in their performance, which is an example of academic excellence. Our national merit recipients, our world language seal of illiteracy that Ms. McCoy and Mr. Ferris have worked so hard to bring together. And we've had our first groups of students. World Language also has an honor society. And it's not just for the grade, but it's commitment to your world language. So if you're in that world language for all four years. We also have numerous international Skype opportunities. Just a couple of days ago, Tricia Uniac Skyped with a grandparent of one of our students who served in the French Foreign Legion and was able to sort of talk, what was that like? And talk about French culture and the expectations. To me, those are opportunities to give our kids a look into authentic learning and authentic understanding. In art, the numerous submissions to local and national art competitions that happen every year. I'm so proud, not only that we get to display the art in our schools, but that our kids get to submit it to local museums, to national contests. That we have a Runes magazine that students submit. And if you've never seen that, I'll bring a copy the next meeting. It's really one of our greatest sources of pride. And a lot of times, it's kids who really are passionate about what they do within their writing, within their artwork, their ceramics work. And they're able to then showcase that. We put it together in a really nice booklet at the end of each year. In health, it's the grade nine research projects that impact the students' own lives. Once again, it's not physical education from 1984, but rather it's wellness. It's lifelong learning. It's health components that you can take with you for the rest of your life. Social studies, and I won't read them all, but, you know, there's just numerous things that happen. I think for any of you who've had the pleasure of having your child sit in Mr. Bork's AP government class, the role play opportunities that he provides in the auditorium where the kids get all dressed up and they research their candidate, or they research a Supreme Court case. And they go so far and so far into depth where they become that character. So it's no longer just a role play, it's an act, it's art. Those opportunities. English, we have a genius hour where a couple of our teachers allow students to pick a topic of their choice that doesn't necessarily have to be from a book that they're reading. And they do a presentation for the class and it's an opportunity for the class to learn what it is that they're interested in. Science, some environmental science projects that have impacted our community. The sustainability organization that we have actually. actually came out of that and the tags that have existed at the middle school for many, many years. Mr. Macy is using the greenhouse. And thanks to Dawn and our Facilities Director for, you know, making numerous improvements to that greenhouse. It is fully functional. It is operating. And he's using hydroponics and teaching the kids not only how to grow crops, but then they're analyzing those crops and looking at cell division, looking at DNA. Math, it's the flip classroom that allows students to learn at their own pace. It's a different way of learning math that gives students opportunities to keep going back and revisiting a video and then having time in the classroom with the teacher to go over things instead of it being, you know, 9:30, 10 o'clock at night and they're in their bedroom and they're thinking, I don't know how to do this. So we're flipping that around. Technology, you know, we've done an awful lot and thanks to Nick Rowden, his department, for increasing coding. We have girls at Code Club. We have coding that is happening in each of our classes. We, thanks to DSEF, we have a grant for a CNC machine where we're able to create three dimensional projects that students design from scratch, from their brains to the computer. And then they actually are able to make it. It's like the full manufacturing implementation right there at DS, which is great. Jazz, I saw it at the brunch a couple Sundays ago. The improvising opportunities that our kids have. And it was fascinating because Janice Berry told the crowd there that this next song is something that the students created on their own. And they did all their own improvising. And it was a jazz technique. And they've also in the past done some personal composing. We've had students who have had the opportunity to compose their own music, which to me is authentic and is academic excellence at its best. I mean, you are using so many different skills. Our language-based program that exists at both the middle and the high school that has brought students back into the district and has allowed them to thrive and do incredibly well and go off to college and graduate from Dover Sherborne High School, where is where they should. So, you know, those are some of the things that happen. And then there's obviously other things that take place too. And the data around the APs and the SATs is important and we certainly value it. But I also value this too. And the work that I see our teachers and our students doing each and every day, to me, is what gives us the greatest satisfaction to know that we are constantly striving for academic excellence at the high school. That is an absolute goal. That is an absolute expectation. We have high standards for our students. We have high standards for our teachers and for our administrators. And as a result, we're going to keep striving to be the very best we can.
And that academic excellence continues at the middle school.
So, so many good things are happening at the middle school. I do want to pause for one second and just talk about some of the amazingness that happened last year. When we think about academic excellence, when the students were remote, hybrid, the time at home turned into all these passion projects. And when we think about the middle school age group, when they're 11, 12, 13, maybe 14, that they are so curious and they have such a skill set already to then go into passion projects because they happen to be home. So the number of kids that started gardening and we had an outstanding performance at the science fair this past year. It was tremendous. We had kids entering multimedia video competitions just because they wanted to. And so I feel like when we think about all of the cool things that happen at all of the schools, when the kids own it enough to go and pursue something really special in their own field because they want to and they're using the tools that they've built up from school, I feel like that is the ultimate achievement for us. So really great things happened through the pandemic. And as many kids were challenged, there were many kids that thrived. And so there's some nice trade offs there. But back in the middle school these days, we have, it's a buzz. It's so energizing and exciting. Like teachers are overjoyed to be huddled up in book clubs and kids are reading and picking personalized book selections for, you know, all of that sort of stuff. The music was phenomenal. And after, I think about how they struggled all year last year, trying to make music and go outside and the wind is blowing the band's hands. I mean, like the resilience, awesome. But then, you know, like just to see them all celebrate in the balloons. I mean, it was just amazing for them to showcase their talents. You know, the usual amazing things. And our teachers continue to just innovate and create new things. There was an escape room in the science classroom the other day. And, you know, it's when I don't want to go back downstairs because the kids are so engaged. The teachers are feeling alive and like we're back to doing the thing that we love to do. So just a lot of things. And then we're also working to streamline a lot of our processes throughout the district. So we're starting some student support teams and data teams and kind of looking at our practices and how we refine our practices and how we communicate through all the different teams, whether they're departments or teams like grades and all the different ways that we can all just row in the same direction and really make sure we're hitting all the different needs of all of our different learners, which is a bit of a puzzle because, you know, we have mostly heterogeneously grouped students.
So I'm going to pause on academic excellence for a minute and then return to it.
Okay. So just speaking to some of the community building that's been happening at the middle school. Coming out of the pandemic, there is a little adjustment period of kids learning how to be back in big groups and learning how to manage the unstructured times of lunch, break, bus, those kinds of environments. We're just very stimulating for a lot of kids. We're seeing it across the state. I'm sure you see it in the news. Our Dover Sherborne students have been really fantastic. But it's been improving week after week. The kids are getting more accustomed to the old days of, you know, this is how we do break, this is how we do lunch, you know, and all the routines. And it's amazing because they really are evolving in front of our eyes. So we've, and we've also just been constantly talking to them, whether they're in classroom conversations, they're in team meetings, grade level meetings. We had a whole assembly. Dr. Tiana pulled everybody together, talking to the, sending letters to the parents, sending letters to the staff, having staff conversations, lots and lots of communication. But it's those, all those threads come together to build the fabric of catching all the kids and helping everybody feel welcome, supported, loved, and that they have a sense of belonging so that they can do all the learning that we would like them to do. So I know that there were some letters sent home and, you know, we can't talk terrible, you know, details about what's going on. But in a nutshell, you know, some unexpected behaviors. And we're just, we need the whole fabric of the community to help support these kiddos. And so we're trying to communicate with all the adults to help students make the best decisions for themselves because we really believe that we, everybody belongs. And everybody was kind of holed up in their rooms in the tiny boxes and we have to remember how to integrate. So that's really what's been going on for the middle school.
So to bring it back together, as John mentioned, there is public information, which tends to be very standardized, whether it's coming out of a standardized assessment or it's our per pupil expenditure or our class size. Boston Magazine and US News and World Report, we know are two of those very public domains. And I thought it was important to just remind everybody of the variables that go into those rankings. So for Boston Magazine, class size, student teacher ratio, MCAS proficiency, SAT scores, you can read the list there. I'd like to point out educator evaluations has been added to that equation. So just as our students are kind of ranked into four buckets in MCAS, so are our teachers through the evaluation process. And so now they are looking at the number of our teachers who are either proficient or exemplary and using that as part of the calculation. It's a subjective measure. And if you go from one high school to another high school, even within the same district, like Boston, where I came from, what you define as exemplary in one school might be different than what you define as exemplary in another school. So what's typical is we have high expectations for our teachers and we want to recognize excellence and give the exemplary. But, you know, not all of our teachers get that every year. And we also want to make sure that teachers who have room for growth are given that constructive criticism and feedback through the evaluation process. So they might not land in the proficient or exemplary bucket, which then affects our ratings. So the most recent ratings were affected by educator evaluations. And our graduation rate in that, through challenge success and through the portrait of a graduate, we've been saying to kids, if you need a year between high school and college to go out and save the world, change the world, do good, figure out how you want to spend that $250,000 before you sign on the dotted line, do it. But that creates a gap year and that affects our graduation rate. US News, again, very much about how many of our kids are taking one or more AP classes. Again, we want to make sure that our students are being challenged and have access to college-level courses. But that's a huge factor. In addition to MCAS proficiency, they have some mechanism of predicting what we should get on MCAS and then they compare that to what we actually get on MCAS. They look at our scores on APs and MCAS for students who qualify for free and reduced lunch and for our BIPOC students to make sure that we're supporting all kids equally. And they also want to make sure the kids graduate in four years. So for our students who we've been keeping in district, who might qualify for an education until they're 22 and need that extra year or that extra two years of high school, they don't graduate in four years. And that affects our rankings. And that's against our beliefs and core values as a district. Couple of things I wanted to point out is interesting points. Our 2021 rankings in US News were based on 2018 and 19 data because in 2020, pandemic hit. And last year, many of these assessments didn't exist. Another thing I want to point out is here is Dover Sherborne pulled from Boston Magazine. So you see, we have 674 students at the high school. Average class size is 16.4, a teacher to student ratio of 11.6 to 1. 91 is our percentage of students who scored meeting expectations or exceeding expectations on MCAS in English. What's interesting is in 2021, 94% of our kids did that. There was no test in 2020. 2019, 89% of our kids were meeting or exceeding. So I don't know where they got the 91, which would affect us, the difference between being number eight and being number seven. The 92 is our proficiency in math, which was from 2021. The 99 in science, which is from 2019 because again, our 10th graders haven't taken it. And the 85.4 and 10.4, again, goes back to the educator evaluations. So in 2018, 85.4% of our teachers were in the proficient category. 10.4% of our teachers were in the exemplary category. So very few did not meet either, right? But after a lot of calibration and a lot of work as the leadership team in providing teachers with professional development and pushing them to try new things and wanting to acknowledge that, our numbers went up in 2019. We had 18% in the exemplary column. And we had even more last year because everybody reunited, or excuse me, reinvented their craft and we wanted to give them credit for that. So just based on the year, these numbers fluctuate. So I think that we need to be careful about the rankings and how much credence we give to either accurate information or how that information changes from year to year. So that said, in the spirit of challenge success and the spirit of a portrait of a graduate and the spirit of supporting all kids, not today, because this is a conversation that would take a long time and we need to involve our community and our parents and our teachers and our students. But there are so many factors, just a few of them listed here, that I think we should use and consider as we measure success as a district. You know, our public profile on the DSE website will always have class size, will always have MCAS scores. Boston Magazine will continue to create equations from year to year that they like to use. But many districts, and Kathy has examples of these too, are creating their own report cards that are more big picture, whole picture. And all of the things that you heard John and Anna talk about can be highlighted for our community to see the academic excellence and the opportunities our kids have in the classroom. So I would love, now that, coming back to typical time, once our bandwidth increases a little bit, to gather, you know, a multi-stakeholder group and really think about which of these factors are most meaningful to us.
Well, I like that there's no bullet for magazine rankings.
Yeah.
You know, I, we choose to lead in this and not follow what, you know, magazines and real estate companies, you know, want to measure.
And what profession, when you talk even about the superintendent, I've always called it a growth model. When I go before you as a school committee and we're going to have the opportunity coming up, I think in December finally, you know, to talk about, you know, what do you expect the superintendent to accomplish? What are those goals? There are some times you might rate a superintendent and then there are four categories, which come out to eventually one rating. There might be an exemplary area. There might be a proficient area. There might be a needs improvement. You know, you want to see more. That's what the public should expect and we expect that for every one of our teachers, for their professional growth. You know, again, we talk about, and I think this was a really good night to see all of the things that are happening to make up, you know, what is excellence in your school district. But just to, just to make people understand in any business and many people own businesses here. You want the, certainly your teachers, your staff members to improve and to give them those opportunities. You have more professional development opportunities. We make sure you have strong mentors for your leaders. You know, doing all of the things that make you the district that you are.
Well, and one thing that I would like to add is that I've seen for my kids. And I know that we didn't get to do it as much during COVID, but the organizational abilities that you all helped them to figure out. I have a second-year college student and her ability to compartmentalize and say, this is my schedule, this is what I have to do. And that was taught starting in middle school here and it's built all the way through high school. And I have to say that my, my youngest is now learning all of it. And it's impressive because it makes for very organized adults who are very self-motivated. So, thank you.
Just a question. My kids are younger, so I haven't had to have any children apply to college yet. The colleges themselves, when they look at high schools, what rankings do they look at for the high schools? Who ranks them when they look, because that was my understanding that colleges look at a high school and say, okay, this was a great high school or this one had some challenges, et cetera. When they're accepting candidates, where do those rankings come from? John, do you want to talk about that?
Yeah, certainly. So, you know, it's a little bit of a mystery, the college game. And I think parents, including myself, who have gone through it, you know, you often do wonder. So they really don't look at magazine rankings.
That's what I assume.
They really don't. What they're looking at is the rigor of your curriculum. What are the highest levels you offer in each of your academic areas? They're looking at how do the students score on somebody's standardized tests? They're also then looking at other value-added things that they can bring to the table. In some case, it might be a musician, it might be an artist, it might be an actor, it might be an athlete. So there's lots of factors like that too. But it really comes down to the rigor of the curriculum that that child takes. And they're looking for an upward trajectory. So one of the things we've often said to students and to parents is, you know, freshman year, if you've got a mix of some C P and some honors, you're actually in a really good place. There are some kids who can handle that honors, all honors, all, you know, all the time. There are some. But most of them that are doing really well have that combination and then they continue to progress upward so that they get those opportunities. And then we look for them to excel in the areas of academics that really they're passionate about. And that doesn't mean, oh, you just take this easy course because it's not a subject, that's not the case, but rather you have those opportunities. So really, it's, it's the rigor of the transcript and that transcript itself is recalculated. So let's, let's take Brown, alright? Brown will take our school profile and they'll look at the number of students we have, they'll look at the activities, they'll look at our academic course load. They'll see what this student has for a G P A and they'll recalculate it because every school, as typical in New England, every school has a different G P A system. And they have to make it so that it makes sense, so that they are comparing it to a kid from New York, a kid from Ohio, a kid from Texas, a kid from Florida. And then from there, you know, they look at other factors, standardized tests and the letters of recommendation and other things. So it, basically, it really comes down to that four-year program that that child invests in.
Yeah. I mean, I get the individual things and being the athlete and things like that. I guess I was wondering, where does the school profile come from? And it comes directly from us. And then the school, the college themselves must rank that themselves, right? Or is there some big national company that does it?
Well, I'm sure that each school has their own, their own mechanism. So there is something called the scattergram, which is used on this program called Naviance. And Naviance is a guidance program that our kids and our parents use. And kids can look to see what types of scores and what types of academic performance got certain kids into school X from us. The other part of it is establishing relationships with these colleges and universities. And really, thanks to the S E F and to our budget, we've been able to send our counselors and to go on tours of colleges all over the country and even internationally. Because we think that that's really important so that if need be, a counselor can get on the phone, call somebody from Lafayette and say, I've got this kid who I think would be a great fit. I went and saw Lafayette. I know that you have this great engineering program. And this is why I think this kid would be a really good fit. This is the kid's name and look for that application. So that doesn't guarantee it, but when you have those good relationships, it does help foster and it can sometimes move the needle.
And do you think, so, because I know parents are worried about this. It's obviously we've all heard about it, the rankings when we go down the dance for them. So I guess, I do wonder if that's the kind of thing that we should be telling the community with children, with kids my age, says, the people who've been through college may understand this, that their children. But I think there's a lot of people with younger children that don't understand they're looking at these rankings. You guys are probably getting heck for it because we've been dropping. But if you, those are the questions I'm asking here and your answers have been fabulous to know that it's really the relationships we have with some of these colleges. Or the child's transcript, obviously.
Sure, sure. Yeah, absolutely. You know, the other thing too is how a school ranks with U S News and with Boston Magazine really has no impact on the college university because they themselves are in that same, thrown into that same game. In fact, many colleges and universities do whatever they can not to provide U S News and World Report with rankings information because they think it's going to be misused. Here's the other complication. I think maybe more outreach with the middle schools, but we're also careful because we don't want it to be when they're in sixth grade saying, you know, we're going to give you a huge data dump of here's what you need to do to get into college. Because it really should be about enjoying and growing through that process. So freshman year, the guidance counselors will meet with the kids. And, you know, we have, we have savvy, intelligent kids and well-informed parents. So they know that that's out there, but we really try to make the transition grade nine just to be about transitioning to a different building, different, you know, opportunities that exist with your sports and your drama and all that. And really still let them be that kid because we feel like there is plenty of time for the college piece. People can still on their own, you know, do some things. We have found that if you give them too much, you got really stressed-out kids as grade nine thinking, alright, I didn't do so hot on this one history test. Is this going to impact me for college? And I'm thinking, that's really not where we want to go.
Oh yeah, exactly.
Right? So, but I agree. I think that, you know, what you raised a good point of how can we, how can we give sort of the, the middle school parents some information that's beneficial without overloading?
Can I? Go ahead. You go.
Will you finish, Tracy?
Yeah, yeah. No, I just, I know parents are worried about this and if you just get them not to be so worried, it'll probably ease around all of you.
Sure.
Well, now we have it on video, so we can just share.
I guess I just wanted to say that you had talked earlier about having a performance report. And I think having looked at other districts' performance reports, that that's a piece of essentially P R. But to your point, Tracy, for families who are looking and are worried or, you know, put a lot of credence in these things or, you know, I've heard the word complacency come up. I can't imagine a worse adjective to describe the middle school and the high school than complacent. Having experienced it, you know? You know, I look at, for instance, the A P numbers, the high numbers in the social sciences, in particular in history and government. It's not cited there, but that's a really popular class. The school takes a risk in opening, there was a point where my oldest daughter, where you had to have prerequisite grades to get into those classes. And there was gate-kept. And the reason it's gate-kept is because by only having the very top students take those classes, you're guaranteed to get lots of fours and fives. And that looks a really good to best a magazine. And that's not doing a service to our students who might be able to be very successful, whether they get the five or not, who cares? If they learned about our government and our history and, and got to be in all those awesome experiences and they want to do the work. That hurts us. Because the more kids we put in and we don't get all the five, but that's huge for educating kids and giving them the chance if they want to take that challenge on. So I think it's mostly a P R situation and it's unfortunate that as a public school, we don't have a marketing department like they do at Rivers or wherever. But like, we, if we can do some of that, that's great. Otherwise, we just have to be the marketing department.
Yeah, the thing that I want to add that's, I find really important to this conversation about the ranking of the school and, and, you know, what's it going to do to affect our kids getting into college, you know? I want to go back to challenge success and say that our kids need to go to the right schools for them. And that what I like to see and, and that's one piece. Another piece is I was talking to someone who was a, you know, recruiter for years for a, for a, you know, set of colleges and said, oh, D S, that's such a great school district, you know? Let, I, my hope is that we continue the really good work of educating our students as, in the best way we can. And teaching our parents that there are things that are as important or more important than striving for everyone to get into an Ivy League school. You know, because that's not right for all of our kids. And I have to tell you, both of my kids, who, one's out of college, one's in college, exceeded, exceeded sort of where they should have ended up in college because of what a fantastic way that this school district taught them how to learn. And, and when we have these conversations, I hate conversations about ranking. Because we're teaching kids how to learn and we're teaching them a lot of things and ranking just to me reinforces some things that are, that are sort of detrimental to our kids. And I don't mean to be like lecturing or anything like that. It's just very important, you know, to be part of that educational process that we say that, you know?
And that's the communication I think we need for the parents though, like what everybody is saying right here. You know, this was brought up for a reason because parents are upset out there. And there's even people saying, why is, why did I move here if the ranking is going down? This is what's being said in the community. And I feel the same way. I mean, I was an educator, love college, love, love it. And I understand that for, for some of my children, it's, you know, they're going to be at different places and it depends on them and their personalities and what they do for sports, et cetera. But there are a lot of parents out there who are worried about this. So like, like Maggie said, the P R that we're talking about, how do we get that out to them to say, hey, your kid's going to be okay. Your kid's going to learn. They're going to learn what they need to learn to be successful in life. I guess that's it.
One of, one of the things that we do that we find that is really powerful and maybe we can figure out a way to translate it to, you know, even younger kids is we bring back college D S grads who have gone off to college typically a year or two out. And they come back and they talk to the kids and you could hear a pin drop because the kids want to hear from the source, right? They want to hear it. They've been hearing from adults, okay, we think, we've been hearing from mom and dad, alright, maybe, maybe they're okay. But when they hear that, and what they hear is that our kids are well-prepared, they're good writers, they're good thinkers, they're good people, they're empathetic. They are skilled, they're motivated. And, you know, to me, that's what gives me the greatest satisfaction. You know, I, I understand that the rankings exist and I don't deny them. But from 2013 to 2019, when we were one to now, we haven't done anything different. We haven't lowered our standards, we haven't changed anything. If anything, we've added rigor. So, you know, and, and there was no, you know, our kids weren't getting into any different schools during that time between being one or being nine and now I guess we're five. And it's like a yo-yo. Like I could honestly tell you, Tracy, from being nine to five, I couldn't tell you one specific thing that we did. Different. You know, instead, we kept developing programs, saying, we have a need for this program, we have a need for a social emotional program that's going to allow to keep our kids in school and keep them safe and healthy. And when they return from hospitalization, that we have a plan to get them back to school where they belong, with their peers, with their friends, playing their sports, in music, and excelling and being able to be a kid. You know, that's the goal. That's the goal.
Yeah, exactly. We're going to put you on the road, Mr. Spencer.
And I will say this, and I've said this with the independent schools too. I will take the caliber of Dover Sherburne kids over any independent school you want to bring. Because I'm telling you, we have some of the brightest minds, we have some of the best critical thinkers, we also have some of the nicest, empathetic people who are true human beings. So I'm encouraged by our next generation. Whereas some people are worried and scared, I'm actually more scared about our generation, how we behave. I am less afraid of our next generation because I think that there's been so much thrown upon them that they are going to be so much more resilient and creative and they're going to save us.
They're watching us.
Yeah. Exactly.
Does anyone have any other questions before we move on? Thank you so much.
But we will, we'll talk about ways in which we can communicate that through.
Like you said, it's all on video now that we can watch and we're good.
But there's always things we can do, you know what I mean? There's always ways that we can communicate without overwhelming people, but also giving people, you know, good straight information. One of the things that we used to do, and once again, unfortunately, COVID kind of put a halt to it, is we would have these coffees at different families' homes. We'd do it for the freshman class, the sophomore and the junior class. You know, and I'm hoping that at some point we can get back to that or in the very least Zoom. It's not the same, but those were really, really helpful. And I know that the teachers also did it with parents as well. And I think the more that we can bring that back, we can sort of help with misinformation. We can clarify what's going on and then we can work together on areas that we need to improve. Because as you saw in my N E A S report, and I'm happy to answer any questions, you know, there were three standards that they said we did not meet. One of them is because we needed to finalize our portrait of a graduate, our vision of the graduate, which, well, we had a pandemic. We had to totally shift and had to put N E A S C on there. Our curriculum in one written form is now complete. This was completed this summer. We weren't able to do it prior to the March visit simply because, once again, we were in a pandemic. And we also have plans in place, we're working with Dawn, the facilities manager, around a plan for Lindquist. You know, Dawn and her department have done a ton over these last couple of years in increasing our security, but also maintaining that balance because we have a culture here of both security and open campus. So, you know, like some schools can just say, here's, here's our building, it's a rectangle, we can lock everything. Well, we have four buildings and our kids travel. So we are really like a mini college campus. So we've actually been looking at, what do small colleges do to accommodate their kids in providing safety structures in place? So I'm confident that with each of those N E A S standards, that when we submit our report in March, we will have satisfied every one of them.
Lynn, you have a question?
Yes, I wanted to circle back to the, the community building and Anna, your, your commentary. So, and, and obviously I don't, you know, you don't, the school committee doesn't need specifics about, you know, what events happen. But I think what, what we do need is categories and trends. And, you know, I've, I read, you know, very recently this, the quote that, you know, sunshine is the best disinfectant. So if, you know, reading the letter, you know, to the parents, you know, knowing that we had an assembly and, you know, there's all these, you know, one wonders. You know, what does, you know, the school committee needs to understand, are we having trends in certain, in certain directions that are problematic? And, you know, how are they being handled? And, you know, is there enough information out there to enable us to appropriately address the situations at hand? And, you know, depending on what the situations are, the response is different. And so that's, that's really what I was interested in. I mean, are we talking about an uptick in bullying? Are we talking about what's happening, you know, all over the place now? An uptick in racism or antisemitism? What's, what's the category of issues that are, that are taking place? And have there been discussions around the appropriate way to solve those issues? You know, and Danvers is all over the news, you know, about, you know? So that's what I'm interested in and I think what the school committee, you know, within our purview of.
Sure, sure. Thank you for the question. Yeah, so we've just seen an uptick in, in aggressiveness between students. And they're using aggressive language based on race, based on gender identity, based on religion. Just, I think being behind a screen for a year has made them bold and awkward, to be honest. I don't always feel that it's malicious, but I think that they, they're trying to get a rise out of people. And so they kind of pick the wrong language. And I mean, one of my favorite things about middle school is that we try on all kinds of behaviors and this has always been how middle school goes. And it's like, oh, no, we're not going to do that. Yeah, we're not going to do that either. And they're so, you know, malleable that they try again and they recreate themselves. And so I feel like even in this one quarter where they started being like, you know, I am so bold and, and just kind of trying to be splashy and get noticed and experiment with language that is not appropriate. They've already like, nope, we don't do that. No, we don't do that either. You know, like, these are the boundaries and we can play and be safe and kind and supportive of each other within this perimeter. But that kind of language is not okay. That kind of behavior is not okay. And so we're really just kind of articulating the expectations. You know, and, and we're really working hard and this is a societal issue of saying, this is a place of inclusion and everybody is welcome here. And I think that there's kind of difficulty seeing differences and, and some students kind of saying like, okay, now I'm like sitting next to somebody that's very different from me. Because for a year, they were not sitting next to a variety of folks. You know, so I feel like just kind of reintegrating and saying kind things and, and being inclusive in their dialogue and how they kind of treat each other. So no major fires, like.
Although the person who's referred to is the offensive name, it's a major fire.
Of course, of course. And that's why we take it seriously and it takes a village, right? So we need all the parents and all the teachers and all the adults to help support these kids and say, you made a mistake, that's not okay. We love you and support you anyway. And we're really working on, on restorative justice practices to make it better and to help students heal and correct their wrongdoing. So it's not just slap on the hand like, don't do that. It's, okay, you made a mistake. Now we're going to own it and we're going to work you through this process to support our community because we care about you and we care about the people that you hurt and we're going to move forward together. So it's almost like a, you know, like a family plan. Like we have some odd behaviors and we kind of regroup and we, we go together. So I feel like that's really what the messaging has been. And then, you know, pulling in the teachers and pulling in all the resources, right? And just making sure we're all kind of in the loop of this is, we mean what we say when we have our core values and this is a community of care. You know, so we're not going to put up with any intolerant behavior, but we want more than tolerance. We want acceptance. So we're really trying to get people to kind of broaden their horizons and be kind, like be kind, like be empathetic, like go beyond tolerance, right? And so that's really what we're trying to encourage from students.
And, and we're not immune to it either. And we've had, we've had a couple of things that we've had to deal with as well. And some of it's different, you know, political views on things. And as high school students, they really start to develop some of their political views on things. And I think, you know, some political views have upset others and we've had to, you know, sort of work it through. But we've been working it through with guidance and with Monique and with myself and with others and teachers. So it's certainly not just a middle school issue and it's actually in every single school everywhere. And if a school says it's not, they're lying. Because it is, some of which it's, it's political pieces, some of which it's values that somebody has and somebody has something different. So then it needs to be about conversations to try to get, gain an understanding and then it's that intent and impact that I keep talking to students about. So, you know, we're also experiencing it as well. And I think that it's unfortunately, schools become And I think that it's unfortunately, schools become a little bit of a microcosm of society. And yet, you know, the one thing we keep talking about is mutual respect. There must always be mutual respect, and let's, you know, how do we talk through our problems? Sometimes I feel like our political leaders aren't doing the best job because all they're doing is attacking one another, instead of really trying to sit down and say, why are we where we're at? Where can we find common ground? Where do we still need, you know, growth with each other? And so we're, as a school, we're trying to develop that skill set. But it's hard, just because in many cases, it's a new skill set for some of us. Like, I mean, I think Anna and I have been dealing with it as administrators, but sometimes for our teachers, and it's adding to their, you know, Beth always uses the phrase, their toolkit. And they do. We need additional support and training in those toolkits and helping to foster that. I think some of our teachers do an outstanding job of it, and some, it's just, it's not their wheelhouse. And yet, we're telling them, but we expect you to learn and to continue to grow. So that's why I think that, you know, we're even seeing a little bit of it.
Well, I was gonna... Sorry.
Do you want, do you want to follow up, or...
Well, yeah, I guess a follow up is I think what we, we as a district need to think about is the extent to which we need to call these things what they are, and address them, and so that we all understand what exactly is happening in the community. Because, you know, one, we need to know what's happening and the extent of it in order to recognize whether there's an issue in our district or not. And two, you know, not specifying what is happening enables people in our community to deny that it's happening, or just to remain ignorant about what is happening. And it's, you know, all of our students have different experiences. And I still, I remember the day I was called a name that I will not repeat. I remember it, and I also remember punching the guy in the face. But, you know, it's devastating. And so that's, it is, if we have an issue with it, or, you know, if... It needs to be called out in order to be addressed, I think.
I would just say, I think every district has an issue with it.
Oh, absolutely, no doubt.
No, but what I'm saying is, you know, do we have an issue? Yes, like every other district, we do. And that's, you know, partly why we're engaged in this major equity audit, because we want to peel that onion back and find out, you know, what, why, when, how? And, you know, and then develop an action plan so that we can work to eliminate that.
Yeah, and if you, yeah, I have two things to say. One is the statement, and one is a question. The first one is, you know, if you can't say what's happening out loud, then how can you address it and deal with it? And it's really important for us to be able to, to not sort of make it seem like, well, it's bad, but it's okay. Like, we need to, and I'm not saying, I'm not, you know, I think restorative justice is obviously where we are, but we can't sweep it under the rug. My question is, do you think, are you, are what you, are you seeing in the school this year different in degree, or nature, or amount than in the before times? Or, you know, is it the same?
I'm seeing less right now, which I'm optimistic about.
Okay.
We had a time three or four years ago where, you know, we had to have a student assembly, and we had some antisemitic, we had some racist graffiti, you know, on our bathroom, you know, and real cowardly acts, you know? So, you know, knock on wood, I'm not seeing that. What I'm seeing is conflict sometimes happening around how people interpret policies, issues, again, immigration, right? Really politicized issue. And our high school students in particular have strong views on it. Some of those come from family views, family values, some don't. And I think in some cases, that has caused some friction from some of our student body with one another. I'm seeing less of the overt things that you saw at Danvers, and we're not seeing hazing, we're not seeing bullying, but we are seeing conflict. And it sometimes falls into that intent, impact, and then other times, it's just, they don't know, like, how offensive that is to somebody.
Yeah, I would say, I believe that when we started this year, we had a big uptick of discipline cases. But the caliber of those cases is more like meanness or pushing and shoving. You know, it's just like kids touching kids, and it's like, what are you doing? You know, and like, across the state, like, every other, you know, just like, it was like they had a year of like touching to make up for. And another principal friend said, it's like, they're talking to each other like they're siblings, and they're talking to the teachers like they're the parents. It's like, they forgot all the boundaries. But it was like, I thought it was like brilliant because they were so casual the way you would be with a sibling, that you might not be with, you know, John, that you haven't seen it a while. So I don't mean to make light of it, you know, and, but like, just squirrely behavior is the best way I could summarize. But then we had a couple of things that were just really intolerant speech, and just unkind, like, just unkind. It's not necessarily the level of bullying, but it's just like, why are you being that guy? You know, and don't be that person, you know, like, everybody has a place here. This isn't your school or their school, it's our school, and this is what we stand for, and this is what we're, and this is how we're going to do it. But, you know, some of the speech was really intolerant and not okay. And I think that's really why we wanted to reach out and say, there, you know, kids are experimenting with behaviors and language and aggressiveness that we weren't expecting, and we need to rein it in. And I feel like just in like the last three weeks compared to the three weeks before, they're chilling out. They can handle break without touching each other, you know? You know, they can, they can. I mean, it's just, it was weird things. Like, a kid would pick up a soda and pour it in the other kid's hood, and you're just like, what are you doing? So, you know, nothing, like, it wasn't all earth shattering, but just a couple moments of just like, that is a highly, you know, sensitized word, why are you using that? Do you even know what it means? You know, like, that's middle school. It's just, they see something that's shiny and seems to get a rise out of people, and they plug it in to see if it, you know, and so we're just boundary setting. Nope, we don't do that. Nope, we don't do that. Yes, we do do this. You know, I've had a million conversations about how to be an upstander. You know, if you just stand there, you're saying it's okay, so you gotta, you know... Each kid, you gotta say so, you gotta say that, you know? We all work together, so I feel like that's what it is. And then I also feel like we've had some great parent outreach in terms of, help me, this social media stuff is way over the top, you know? And the group texts, you know, and parents just want knowledge. I feel like we all took a break from some of those heavy parental challenges. And I feel like, oh, man, it's back, you know, like, who's getting left out, and who, you know, all that stuff.
Yep.
But we'll always be honest with you. I think that's really important to say, you know?
I think more importantly too, when you hear the administrators talk about what's happening in the schools, it isn't just the counselors dealing with this, it is every teacher has to take this on. You know, middle school kids need to be supervised, need to set limits. High school, obviously, a little bit different. But I think, you know, one of the things we're seeing all over is, again, it can't just fall on our school adjustment counselors, it has to fall on the whole school community, including our parents, including our families. You know, they need to be partners with us in this, and making sure that this is a safe place where people are included and accepted, and the very things you stand for as a district.
Thank you so much. Does anybody have any other questions? That whole presentation was fantastic. Thank you for all that thought and work that went into it. All right. Done.
So how do we pay for all this? Exactly, I know, poor Jane. So you have your monthly warrant report, and Judy, I look forward to your stopping by at some point and putting some little signatures on some things. But as always, if any members want to see, you know, sort of the makeup of the warrants, always feel free to stop in, we have everything at the business office. Moving on to your financial report as of October 31st. So I'm continuing what we did last year, where sort of keeping the base of the report there and adding new information, that way it's a rolling report, and it allows you to not have to go back and look at your old reports to see about variances. So there is nothing new to report on the revenues since we last met. On the operating expenditures, on the salaries, I will say, we still have the same vacancies that we had when we last met. However, we actually now have some candidates in a pool. So I'm hoping when we come back and see you in December, all of those salaries will be in the encumbrance and won't be positive variances, and that we will be somewhat more fully staffed. So I'm looking forward to that, mainly because one of those positions is accounts payable, which I have been doing. And just to let you know, we have record, or encumbered all the coaching positions, so you're now seeing a true picture of that particular line item. On the expenditures, the information I have for you tonight is that we have done our, our sort of annual projection based on our enrollment data as of October 1st, to see where we are as far as our health insurance. I'm happy to report that we appear to be right on target. We have had a lot of activity, but it hasn't netted out to be either a positive or a negative for us, so that's great. The one thing that I wanted to bring is that, if you recall back, we've talked about West Suburban Health Group. So that's the cooperative bargaining unit, or bargaining group that we purchase our healthcare from. Fallon made the big decision last year that they were leaving sort of the active market and only handling Medicare business. So that has sped up our process for the West Suburban Health Group board, in that we know that we've got to figure out what that solution's going to be for any Fallon participants who are having, who are going to have to switch plans for next year. And as you may know, some of those are working in other districts, some districts are heavy into the Fallon. So this has been a much bigger issue for certain...
Native, Wausau.
Native, Wausau, Shrewsbury, where that is the, their whole healthcare is based on the Fallon plan. So what they have worked hard on on summer is that they're replacing the Fallon plan with what they're considering to be our low cost plan, and it's a limited network plan out of Blue Cross. So it'll have both a high deductible and a benchmark plan. They looked at the provider overlap, and it's 97 to 98%. So it should have, as far as people on Fallon, their impact on their providers, that should be nonexistent. It's pretty much overlaps. And it should, it will stay around the same price that Fallon currently is. So that is great, great, great news. So because of that also, they are expediting the normal rate setting process. So as you know, I usually don't have the rates for healthcare until like, two minutes before we come to that end of the February meeting, so it's always a little nerve wracking. We're actually going to approve the rates in December. And that's to allow those communities time, who are heavy into Fallon, to decide how that's going to impact their budget and move along with the process. So that will probably speed up our budget process a little bit. And so we'll work with both the Dover Ward and Sherborne Advisory about our meeting dates. So we may be refining our budget calendar just a little bit, but I'll let you know about that in December. The other thing that was approved at the last board meeting was the increases for the supplemental plans for our Medicare retirees. As you know, that's on a calendar year. The good news for us is that the majority of our retirees are in medics, and that's seen a 0% increase for fiscal year, or for calendar year '22, which remember, they're already seeing a 5% increase because of the cost share agreement that we have, so, right? So that's actually a sort of a little bit of a bonus, that they're not also having to pick up the increase in the premium.
Is that what's accounted for the other non-employee insurance differential?
No, that is the, that's the property and liability insurance.
Oh, okay.
The, your line item for your retirees is your employer insurance for retired employees.
Okay.
And so my last point on that is that you can see, we've encumbered all that. And so right now, we have a positive variance of $124,000, which will probably encumber, once I figure that number is pretty solid, and that's our contribution to the OPAT. So that meets our minimum $100,000 that we were hoping for. So this was a big healthcare meeting, in that we've got great news to share about where we financially sit right now with that line item, and that we all know what's on our forecast for fiscal year '23 earlier than normal. But it's looking like, so with the change in the plans and a very healthy fund balance, I'm hoping we'll see an impact to our increase in healthcare that will be, you know, not substantial. And so that will be a good thing. We're still seeing in the healthcare industry unused healthcare, right, because of COVID? And so that has been a huge savings to like the West Suburban Health Group because we're still paying the same premiums. The healthcare is not being utilized as much as possible, as normal. And some of that you'll never make up. And so that has been sort of a financial benefit to the healthcare group right now. Any questions on the statement? And then on the back, just, we're still waiting approval from our ESSER grants. They are so backlog because there's so many new grants, and there's a lot of personnel change in the grant department, so we'll be patient, but hopefully by the next meeting, I'll know that they've approved, you know, the budgets that we submitted. And our auditors have completed their field work, based on some timing on a few things, that maybe January or February. I sort of changed it to say, or February for your financial statements. So we'll work our best, but they're a little backlogged also, so trying to get to all their work. And I said it was okay if they needed to play around a little bit with that. Any questions on that? So the next item is, before I go deep into the basement and start working on the budget, if you have any guidance that you would like to at least share with us, things that you're wanting to us to look at, or, you know, input into this first version, knowing that we'll meet multiple times after the first version, but we always feel like it's important to make sure we get any input from the committee, at least at the onset, so we even know what direction to sort of go in. And you don't have to have anything, it's just a new thing that we've been doing the last couple of years to sort of have that dialogue, if there's something on your mind.
Has there been discussion about the HR, our needs in the area of HR that have come to light?
Well, certainly, you know, as I said, I'm looking forward to having an opportunity to meet with the school committee and talk about the so-called big rocks. I mean, I've talked to about communication, we have a job ad out there for some project, one being the discussion tonight about the so-called marketing, or district report card, or coming up with that kind of a mechanism. Another thing that, again, you have a new superintendent coming on board. And it is amazing the work that goes on with the very small team we have at the central office. But to me, there should be a possibility to do a human resource audit, you know, to take a look at the positions. I understand the size of your district, I understand it more every day that I'm here. And while there are times where I think there's a lot of work, where a human resource administrator could be very helpful, it then quiets down a little. But I will tell you, with everything that has gone on this year with vaccine mandates, with supporting our staff, it has been labor intensive with a very small workforce. So I do think it's something worthwhile to bring in an expert and to look at every area, take a look at efficiencies. There may be something where it isn't just a person that oversees HR. There may be something where it isn't just a person that oversees HR. It might be combined with another area that we have need for in the district.
I think we have multiple positions that can handle pieces of HR. One of the other things is that, remember, we share some human resource responsibilities with the two towns. So we don't really, we have ownership of the region employees, but we also, you know, sort of have our hands in the Dover school employees and the Sherburne school employees. But then they're sort of under their, you know, town halls and how they set up. So one thing that I know that we've talked a little bit with Dover is if there's any opportunity to share some of the HR responsibilities, so you have a broader base that you're including. Because individual pieces, there's not enough really for, I think, a true HR person. If we looked more across, you know, where all of our employees stand, maybe that's a way we can sort of share a position like that.
I know with HR, just as an HR attorney, I think a lot of, a lot of companies, a lot, they don't realize what they don't know. And it's only in the hard times that they realize, oh, there are people who specialize in this. There are people who, you know. So I think that the HR audit idea is a really good one because sometimes we just don't know what we don't know.
Right, right.
And that was--
And HR is--
Yeah.
And we had sort of talked about doing that, I think, when Andrew actually came on board. And you, you know, you pick your priorities, school start time, and then COVID hit. So definitely it's been something that we want to make sure we're doing everything appropriately and that we have, but we have different, we have different positions that have different capacities and, you know, and to make sure that we're utilizing our staff in a, in a small district as fully as we can.
Yeah. Let me say this. With 400 employees, most companies who have 400 employees have full-time HR.
Right, but that's 400 employees across three towns.
Yeah, listen, I, John, respectfully, I understand what you're saying. But my experience has been that we're woefully deficient and that we really need to, as Lynn says, find out what we don't know. And I agree, Lynn, that that's, that that's something that we need to--
Oh, yeah. And like I said, it's been something that we had talked about when Andrew actually first came on board. So it just needs to be focused on, you know, other things have come on that have taken higher priority.
Is it, is it inordinately expensive to have someone come in and do an audit of your, I mean, we're small, because like for me, I'm a data person. And so like, I have great respect, that's your industry for both of you, and I have a lot of respect for that. And also, I recognize, like, we're a lean operation and we, like, you know, I come from the education side, so anything that directly impacts students, I'm just like, that's that, no. So like, I would love just a feedback from just somebody who comes in and takes a look and can give us some data on what are the functions, what, who's doing what, are we doing all the things? Because I do agree, especially as we move towards, you know, trying, you know, bringing, onboarding more people, doing more kinds of work with, you know, bringing staff professional development. Like, I do think that making sure that we have all the safeguards in place, that we're doing everything right is, is like--
Right. Because one thing that we've talked about is just similar to how we have an attorney on retainer, having like a human resource just for those more, do, cover the bases that we have here, but then for the more complicated, at least have a true expert to go, to go out to, you know, inquire.
I'm gonna echo what Maggie said. Or I guess what I'm saying is this, that we don't have anyone who hasn't, who has gone to any, has any education in human resources. So we don't know whether that situation is gonna, whether having someone on retainer like that is the best, most efficient and way of going about it with the workforce that we have. But there are people out there who can, we can contact as a consultant and say, look at this and tell us the best way for us to do this.
So, you know, I'll be interested to hear from, from all the different constituencies,
Because we, like, I don't cut my own hair.
what they need to continue to do all those things that we saw tonight.
Okay, so, you know--
Oh, absolutely. Yeah.
You know what I mean?
And on a larger issue, just for my own self, I, I look at the building utilization of
Just like we did with, if you were here, when we did the food service. We had--
Yeah.
Come in, right?
this building and the high school.
Yeah.
So that is exactly what, you know, we wanted to do.
And while I appreciate that we are very efficient, like, this is clearly a French classroom.
Yeah.
So one of the questions I just heard, I don't remember who asked, but you asked
So I would like to understand, do we have the spaces for all the courses that we need
about the expense. I am well aware, having been in a number of districts that actually went through a similar experience.
in the way that we want to be able to teach them for the portrait of a graduate?
Unfortunately, COVID upended something. So I was actually going to reach out because we had put together a request for a proposal
And that's a large scale question that I don't admit like yours, but you know--
to do an audit of an HR office.
So that's another like space utilization groups that come in and do that.
The cost was not astronomical.
So, you know, that's definitely something that we've also talked about.
I think it depends on the size of a district. This is a smaller district than where I was at.
If you know, we were gonna do something like that with Lenquist at some point.
And the former district, I was just in, had just, just put together an HR office when
And then that sort of dissipated a little bit, but yeah, that's--
Not, it's not an emergency.
I took over as the interim last January.
I don't like emergencies. I love the onsite, inside report. I like to know we have to replace the roots.
And the benefits were huge for that district to start to put this office in place.
Right.
But I do want to be making sure that we're asking those questions before we like--
First.
Can't do something that we really wanted to do because we have no building.
So again, we have had some conversation. I can do some outreach and we can, I know the Collins Center in Boston.
Right.
Great. Thank you. All right, thank you.
I know there are a number of consultants that district have used and people that come
So that brings us to our consent agenda. Let's get going back to the field trip, which we have to vote on, which is only the eighth
in and again, spend time, work with your teams, and will do a very thorough report
grade field trips.
Yes, correct.
And then we have to approve the minutes from October, but that, those are two separate,
as to what the recommendations are.
Great.
right, two separate motions. Okay. So I guess, just to open back up, we heard from Superintendent Smith, we had, you know, some questions. And my understanding is that we, it doesn't really make any sense to put this vote off another month or so because the questions that we have, I don't think we're gonna have answers to. No one has a crystal ball of what things are gonna look like in end of May or early June, whenever this trip happens. June?
I'm sorry, June.
That's, I heard somebody whisper June. So--
June 8th to the 10th.
Okay, thank you. Does anyone, does anyone want to share thoughts or open discussion?
So I think, like, I mean, I understand everybody's concern. And I think the only thing, and you're right, it is a rite of passage. And so that's what's kind of giving me some pauses. I wonder what we will do in lieu of going to DC. Because I understand all of the sides in that, you know, it would be better if everyone were vaccinated, but we don't want to say you have to be vaccinated to go. But then part of me thinks, you know, well, it's Charlie's, I mean, it's your, your child's grade. You know, they missed out on, you know, the end of sixth grade. Seventh grade was just kind of a kooky year. I mean, there's no other way to say it. We were in, you know, hybrid, then full, and then, you know, with the mask ever since then. So everybody only knows each other by eyeballs in school. And so, you know, I would just like for them to have some normalcy. So I'm not saying I'm fully on board one way or the other. I just, I do lament the fact that these poor kids have really--
Yeah.
--missed a lot. And I was just kind of hoping that maybe there could be one thing in eighth grade that was the same.
Yeah.
So that's my, that's my pause, because I'm just wondering what, what will we do in lieu of? I know we can't answer that all right now. I just, you know--
Well, I know that, just one second, Tracy. I know that the, you know, the Boston option is always an option each year. My two older kids did go on the DC trip. And it's my understanding that middle school teachers and working with Superintendent Smith are willing to kind of boost up the local trips if we vote to go that way. And I, I completely hear what you're saying. I think no matter what age you are, even for all of us, kids have missed out. I mean, our daughter's had drive-through graduation. You know, it has been a couple of years of loss--
Right.
--or adaptation.
Yeah.
The thing that, that I have a hard time getting past is that this is the whole grade.
Right.
It's a special thing for the whole grade. And, you know, if we said only vaccinated kids can go through graduation, you know, that's maybe the apples and oranges. But to me, what gives me pause, well, the logistics of the sharing of a room, what happens if somebody has a breakthrough case, who goes and gets them? That's, those are details that are very unnerving to me, but I'm not comfortable voting to move forward only for vaccinated children on this trip, is my feeling.
Tracy, you have--
Kate, I actually agree with both you and Angie on this. I think it's important for the children to have this opportunity. The one thing I would like to see though, is, and I know it will happen, but I just have to say it, is that I want to see education of the parents that if that child gets sick, and it doesn't matter what kind of sickness, actually, it could be COVID or something else and they can't travel, that the parents just know what's going to happen, that they're gonna have to go down there. And I think maybe a lot of parents know that, but just to accentuate that. So I agree with both of you on all of your points.
I am, I'm worried about having the trip with that constituency that you have to go down there. Because for me, that's an equity issue. A family might scrimp and save a couple thou, over $1,000 to go on this trip. And I know we say that there's scholarships and there are, but like, if you're like, like, that's a big sacrifice for a lot of families. And if your child became ill for any reason, to pick up and take a 24-hour turnaround flight or call into work for four days, you might not be able to do that. And that, that for me is like, it's one thing to say like, you have to do it, but then when it actually happens, like, we all collectively bear responsibility for that. And I am really worried about the stakes of that.
But isn't that with all the trips? Isn't that with all the trips, though?
No. Like, how so? Like, a high school kid? Like, we had high school kids get pretty deathly ill in the lappagoes and they had, they came home without their parents.
Oh, see, my understanding was that because of COVID, even, so if they get COVID down wherever they are, I mean, you can get COVID vaccinated or not vaccinated, and I know the chances are different, but my understanding is that with any of these trips, the parents are going to have to come out. That was my understanding.
I don't think that's true for like a 17 or 18-year-old.
Well, I think that's what we had said that we would expect, yeah.
Yes.
I guess, then I guess I would look at it differently because there's like 20 kids going and that's a different kind of trip.
And you're not flying home with your child if they have COVID too. That's another--
Yeah. Right. So these are the questions for all the trips. I mean, what we're saying right now is that if a child gets sick on any of these trips, the parents have to go down there. So the parents need to know that ahead of time. And I agree with you, Maggie. It could be an equity thing. It's super expensive. But this is, I want the parents well-educated on this fact, so they make that decision ahead of time to say, okay, gosh, I can't take a week off, two weeks off work if my kid gets sick. I really can't do that. I can't afford to fly now. I can't tell them at the beginning, so there's a real understanding. So they understand what, what could be at risk here now during COVID. You know, other, other years, this was different. But if we want to give them these opportunities, we have to just, the parent just have to know it's a little bit different in that, in that case.
Absolutely.
You know, I'm really sad about this. Both my kids went on the DC trip and, but, but we're the grownups. And sometimes we have to make decisions that make us sad, but they're the right choice for our kids. And I also have to say, this is one of those decisions where I feel like that our superintendent's recommendation is important because I don't want to substitute my judgment in something like this. I'm sure, you know, that we've talked to the Board of Health and we've run through all the options. And if our team says, this is what we recommend, I, again, I'm sad, but I just think it's probably better safe than sorry that it's the right thing to do.
And all the kids going are eligible to be vaccinated? I mean, all the kids going, all eighth graders?
Unless they have a medical or religious issue, yeah.
I know.
I know. It's, I've, I've heard from parents, just if this helps, I have heard from parents that their children have medical issues, they cannot get vaccinated. So my worry is excluding them based on a medical issue. That's not a good thing. That's not a good thing to do. It's not fair.
And we know this, we know that, I mean, I honestly, this is an honest question. What is the science? Like, what's the, are there medical issues that would prevent someone from getting vaccinated?
Yes, there are.
Per the--
There are, definitely. Yeah. If it helps, maybe next time, I mean, I suppose it's too late now, but I could have read some of these letters from the parents. I wouldn't want to de-identify, but yeah.
Oh, no, I don't need, no, I just, I want to know what the, what the governing agencies say about, and if, and if that is in fact the case, that there are medical conditions that, that prevent someone from getting vaccinated and that's--
You know, it's, they're very few. But, I mean, and to me, let me, let me put it to you this way. I am a, I am a vociferous, I know you're surprised at this. Thank you for laughing. I am a vociferous supporter of vaccination. And that sort of is like tugging at the fact that I also am really, that I think doing something where 10% of the kids are excluded, even though it's in a sense their parents' choice, it bothers me. It bothers me because it's not their choice, it's their parents' choice. And, you know, then you're excluding them and, you know, you set up all those middle school things about kids being not able to go on something. And to me, even though it's a small group, the harm to those kids is, is, is greater than the benefit in a sense. I don't know, it's sad, but I really think that we have to go with what-- Ms. Smith? Is that what--
Yes. Superintendent Smith.
Huh? Superintendent, yeah. I'll do that.
I think too, Judy, that I, as I was really grappling with this since our last meeting, and yes, I do have an eighth grader, who I have not discussed this with, I, I think we have to vote on where we are right now.
Yeah.
And I really, really hope we're in a different place next year. And if, next year, there are sales, some people who for whatever reason aren't vaccinated, we might feel differently by then. People might have more information, they might have gotten more comfortable. Who, who knows? But I, but, you know, we have to use what we know right now. That's all we have.
And so we're saying to go on this trip, you would have to be vaccinated or you would be an excluded member of the group?
Well--
We haven't said anything.
We haven't said anything. I'm saying I'm not comfortable voting in favor of mandating a vaccine on a, for a trip that's for an entire--
And, you know, then you're excluding them and, you know, you set up all those middle school things about kids being not able to go on something. And to me, even though it's a small group, the harm to those kids is, is, is greater than the benefit, in a sense. I don't know, sad, but I, I really think that we have to go with what. Ms. Smith, is that what?
Yes, Superintendent Smith.
Huh? Superintendent, I'll do that.
I think too, G, that I, as I was really grappling with this since our last meeting, and yes, I do have an eighth grader, who I have not discussed this with. I, I think we have to vote on where we are right now.
Yeah.
And I really, really hope we're in a different place next year. And if, next year, there are sales some people who, for whatever reason, aren't vaccinated, we might feel differently by then, people might have more information, they might have gotten more comfortable. Who, who knows? But I, but, you know, we have to use what we know right now, that's all we have.
And so we're saying to go on this trip, you would have to be vaccinated or you would be an excluded member of the group?
Well.
We haven't said anything.
We haven't said anything. I'm saying I'm not comfortable voting in favor of mandating a vaccine on a, for a trip that's for an entire grade. I was okay, I felt fine with it for those two high school trips where it's extracurricular, small group during a vacation, as opposed to this culminating year-end thing that kids look forward to, is my, my feeling.
Well, looking at the clock and feeling like I'm gonna definitely be the bad guy here. I just want to put a motion on the table. I'd like to make a motion that we support the superintendent's recommendation not to send the kids to DC this year. It's sad, but I'd like to put that motion on the table.
And should we word it that way or should we word it to?
Tell me what you want me to do.
Well, to approve, I'm just thinking of, to approve a local option for the eighth grade.
I am happy for them to go anywhere they want to go, that's not sitting overnight. I don't want to, I don't want to mandate as a school committee what they have to do. Like, I don't want to tell them they can't do anything or have to do this instead. I feel like these folks do this, like, they, they, they put in a ton of energy and work and heart into organizing this stuff. So I don't want to say, you can't go here, but you better take them on a whale watch or whatever. I just want them to go to decide what's the best thing.
Well, are we canceling? Because the trip is, exists, right? And we're taking it off the table?
No, we haven't approved it.
I thought people had already paid and everything.
No, not at all.
The high school trips were that way.
So in a sense, we're voting.
You're not voting to approve it, yeah.
We're voting to not approve it, or if it's cleaner, we're voting to.
Or to replace.
To encourage them to take other field trips.
A motion to replace the DC trip.
With a local option.
With local day trip options.
Right, I would like to make a motion to not approve the trip to Washington DC and would kindly request that the staff members attempt to replace it with local options as best they can.
Day trips.
Day trips.
Which don't have to be approved.
Which don't, yeah, that's not up top.
Okay. Second.
Are you seconding?
I am seconding.
Okay. I didn't mean to say that accusingly.
You did, no, that's okay, I'm, I'm getting tired, I'm not on the ball. Any more discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Not in favor.
For, okay, opposed. Okay, the motion passes with, with heaviness. Thank you. Okay, approval of the minutes from October. Does anyone have any edits or changes?
I'd like to make a. Oh, yes. I'm so sorry. The National Parks Trip, I know we mentioned one trip, October 12th, right? Is that what we're talking about, the minutes?
Yes.
The National Parks Trip, was that the company that required the vaccine?
No, no, it was the Island Schools.
It was not, okay, I mean, Island School, okay. When we discussed the Island School the same day, right? I don't think that's in the notes, but I could be wrong, I was just reviewing them. Yeah, I could be wrong, but I did review the minutes, I was looking for it and.
You might not have any reason why you needed to take, like.
You already approved it.
Yeah, you'd already approved it. You already approved it.
It was already approved, okay.
Yeah.
We didn't have to take it off because they made the, they made the mandate on us.
Okay. Oh, excellent, okay, thank you.
Any other questions about October minutes? Okay, I'd like to make a motion to approve the October 12th minutes from 2021. Okay, any more discussion? All in favor? Great, thank you. The rest of the items in your packet are for your communication. And any items for our next meeting, reach out to me, please, reach out to Superintendent Smith. And I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Bye.
All in favor?
Bye.
All right.
Thank you.